Good morning, and thank you for joining us on the special meeting April 1st. We have a few things on the agenda item, and before we get started, we would like to have a roll call of those that are on the telephone present. We have Director Kim Hunter, we have Admin Secretary Tina, and Kristi Anderson with Environmental Health. On the platform is also Dr. Richard Coons, Supervisor Jeremy Brown, myself, and Supervisor Morris. Could those that are on the phone please identify themselves?
This is Supervisor... Supervisor Fenley. That's pretty hard to read.
Kelly Warren. Margaret Wong.
Supervisor Brown.
Marcy Joe Cusell.
So Ms. Liz Hamilton and Mr. Ed Presley both spoke at the same time for those that are on the phone and didn't hear that.
There's still Shelley on the line too. I didn't hear her. She's still on.
Shelley Nelson, did you identify? Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Hearing no more people to be identified on the phone, we will go into our Pledge of Allegiance, and Ms. Tina, would you please do this?
Well, I have to give the mic set to Republican here very well.
Please, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose will the liberty and justice for all.
And we would thank everybody on the phone for muting their phone, and we're sorry for the feedback on the mics. We're working in progress. Dr. Coons, did you want to...
Yeah, you asked me to give a overview. What I'd really like to do is thank, I thank all the time, our department heads, because they do an amazing job, and they're great team leaders, but during this time of this pandemic, the ones, the people we're really counting on are in line staff, and they've done an outstanding job, stepped up to the plate, working under unusual circumstances, some having to work split shifts, some having to work from home, some having to work outside their normal assignment, and we have had everybody just pitching in through the generosity of the board. We adopted the 80 hours of additional sick leave, and we have had nobody that I'm aware of that is, doesn't meet the four criteria is asked to use that. They've all stayed at their post and done an amazing job, so I really want to thank the, not only the community, but the employees of Trinity County for stepping up in and taking care of all of us.
Thank you for that. And unusual times give us an opportunity to just reflect, so I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for us to all consider the things not only in our community and county and state and nation, but the world, so please join me in a moment of silence. So we're going to go straight into consent calendar, and then we're going to ask Ms. Anderson to give us an update on the, I'm sorry, yes, after consent. Thank you. So consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. A member of the board, staff or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. We're going to go ahead and take these in order. Shelley Nelson is waiting for item 1.1, Adopt a Resolution, which revives the interim personnel policy regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus. No fiscal impact.
Yes, thank you. This is Shelley Nelson, HR Director. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So at the board meeting on March 17th, the board adopted Resolution 202016, which established an interim personnel policy. We revised it on March 23rd, where Resolution 202017 was adopted and includes some additional revisions to the 202016 resolution that's replacing it. This new item that I brought to you this morning will replace the 202017 resolution and include one new revision, which is listed in the staff report. I want to remind you, this is a living document. It will be brought back to you from time to time if necessary to address modifications or clarifications that need to be made. Would you like me to read the number 10 revision to the resolution?
No, Shelley.
I think that was needed.
I thank you for that offer, but I do not think that's necessary at this time. It is in the backup, and anybody from the public can go online and see that. Thank you, though. I appreciate that. Any questions from the board? And we have no public here. Anybody on the public, on the conference call? Not hearing any. We're going to bring it back to the board.
Fenley, would you approve as presented?
And Supervisor Morris, second. And we're going to go ahead and do this by roll call. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Fenley?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chau?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. 10 o'clock, Public Hearings, Planning and Zoning. Item 2.1, Conduct a Public Hearing to Acknowledge Receipt of the 2019 Housing Element Progress Report. Potential Increase in Grant Funding Available. Ms. Anderson?
Good morning. Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director. I'll be presenting this item this morning, and I'm pleased to present you with the 2019-2024 Housing Element Update. The previous housing element, the 2014-2019 housing element expired on August 31st, so we moved quickly, I feel, on this project, hired a consultant. We worked with Placeworks Consulting, and they delivered a document that is, has been reviewed by Housing Community Development, and it's been found to be in compliance with state housing law. I feel like I've given a brief update or overview of the housing element process before, but just a refresher real quick. The housing element is one of seven mandated and required elements of the general plan. Unlike the other six elements, the housing element is unique in a few different ways. First of all, it's the only element that is required to be updated by state law. Now, other elements, of course, encouraged and recommended to be updated for internal consistency and to reflect state laws and vision of the community. However, there's no timeline on that. There's no exact, you need to update this in 10 years. There's nothing like that in state law for the other six elements. The housing element is either mattering on the jurisdiction of five or eight-year cycle. Trinity County happens to be on a five-year cycle, so every five years, you're going to see this document, hopefully. If you don't, we're behind, but we're doing really well considering this is a very good, you know, very prescribed and precise document. And what I mean by that is it's very, very precise in state law, in the government code, starting with housing, with the Housing Section 65580 in government code, Housing Element Law. It's very prescribed on how the housing element is organized and what information is in that housing element. And so it is, it is unique. Now, other elements, again, there is an outline of what, and there are required items, but the housing element is far above and beyond where those other elements are required, and especially when it comes to the organization and the structure and the analysis required. It's quite different. So I'm just going to quickly go over the housing element document itself, and chapter by chapter explain what's involved with that. It'll be very brief.
Can you speak of the...
Yes. Sorry about that.
My closure.
I'm just getting up. Okay, we're adjusting. We got it. Is that better? Supervisor Groves? Okay. Okay, so with the housing element that's being presented today, we start out with Chapter 1. That's the introduction. This is overview of the general county characteristics, the purpose of the element, and it also describes public input and workshops that were held. Public input and making sure public has, the public has time to comment, and the opportunity is a very important thing with all general plan elements, but definitely with the housing Chapter 2, Assesses Housing Needs. That's a further overview of the population, demographics, economy of Trinity County. A lot of census data involved in Chapter 2, and just an assessment of the community situation. Chapter 3 is titled Resources and Constraints. Chapter 3, we start to dig into, you know, further housing element law, and that's where we first, we see the regional housing needs allocation. That is, that is something that comes up with every planning cycle for a housing element, planning cycle being our five-year cycle. The Department of Housing Community Development will provide a number based on data received of how many housing units we need to provide, new housing units, and what income levels those are in. So that's, again, it's called ARENA, the acronym, but the actual name is Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Very important number. Our number for Trinity County in this cycle is two units, one in the very low-income level and one in the low-income level. I believe that's probably one of the lowest in the state. Also, in Chapter 3, you start to get into more of an analysis. The topic of availability of infrastructure is a big issue in rural counties. When you're talking any type of potential multifamily development, those developments need to be cited where there's infrastructure. Very difficult to have an apartment complex on a septic system, so you're looking for water and sewer, community services nearby the location where the multifamily development would be proposed, and also good access, of course. So you're looking for a more developed area. So when you look at our ARENA numbers, as we get farther into the housing element, you're going to see that our sites that we look, we identified for potential further residential development and/or multifamily development, whether it's single-family, you know, like a duplex, two-family situation, or multifamily, we're focusing in on Weaverville, Lewiston, and Hayfork, because that's where the infrastructure is available. Okay, and then Chapter 4. Chapter 4 is where we get into our, addressing how we're going to, the solutions and the goals for our housing, and that includes the housing programs. So that's a big one. Housing programs. First of all, we assess the last year's, excuse me, the last cycle programs that were included in the 2014-2019 housing element, and give a status of, you know, were those completed? If they were completed, how did that go? Is this going to be ongoing? Or are we done? Have we completed that program and that objective? Then some programs, we just often will see, they're inflexible. This was due to staffing, due to various factors. We're not going to keep this going. It's, and you explain yourself. So basically, it's a report card. How'd you do with your last housing element and the programs? So that's included in Chapter 4. Now, when you get to Chapter 5, that introduces the programs for this year, I mean, this year, this cycle, excuse me, for what we call the sixth planning cycle, the 2019 to 2024 housing element. And those are, those are the programs that we're going to be tackling in the next five years. Some of those are ongoing. Some of them carried over from the previous housing element, and then some of them are new. Some of them are combined. You'll see as you go through Chapter 4 that some of them will say, we're adding this to this program, so they might be revised. You might see something carry over in a different program. So right now, as the housing element is drafted and presented, there's 22 programs for the planning cycle, and we feel that those are, can be implemented, and present those to you very confidently that we are creating, have created a document that actually, yeah, is appropriate, and again, can be implemented in the community. So with that, I'm going to specifically go to page 77 in the document. Bear with me. Okay, on page 77, you have an outline of our housing goals and housing policies. And again, this is Chapter 5 in the housing program itself. And so you have the housing policies, and I'm going to read those off, just, they're very important, and, and the programs need to be consistent and support those policies. And it's A through H on that page. A, ensure there are adequate number of housing units to meet the needs of its citizens, meaning the county, the county citizens. B, ensure that housing is affordable to all economic segments of the community. C, ensure that there are adequate sites and facilities available to support the future housing needs. D, ensure that there are housing units available to serve persons with special housing needs. E, work diligently toward the rehabilitation of the county's housing stock and strive to replace housing units in need of replacement. F, support community efforts and citizens in the need of short-term emergency housing. G, prevent housing discrimination. And H, continue citizen participation as part of the housing element preparation and revision process, and maintain consistency between all policies of the general plan.
And I, on the next page.
And I, yes. Ensure environmental justice is adhered to in the process of providing housing. Thank you, Supervisor Fenley. Okay, and then Chapter 5, and then you start to get into what we call the vacant lands inventory, and that's, then we're getting to the appendices. And the vacant lands inventory, I touched on that a few minutes ago. That's where we assess all potential parcels that are vacant and appropriately located for future housing purposes, not just multifamily, but single-family, all types of housing purposes. Of course, the multifamily, again, you're looking at the R3 zoning in the more urbanized areas for Trinity County, being Weaverville, Lewiston, and Hayfork. But these are parcels that are presented to, in, to the public and to HCD as potential development sites. We also take into account when we present these and identify these parcels that land use constraints. This has evolved over the years, and the state law and HCD is much more careful about the parcels. They want more information on the parcels that are presented to make sure they really truly are developable, and that's really taken from the last couple of years, among other things. There's been several issues in housing element law, especially regarding housing elements. Along with the vacant lands inventory, you will have maps of where those sites are located. And then at the end of the document, you have resources presented for, that can assist with housing needs, various resources listed that can be referenced. So with that, I do want to report that the Planning Commission did review this document at a special meeting on March 19th. There was some good discussion, comments received at that meeting, and there was a motion made to recommend adoption of the addendum to the 2014-2019 mitigated, or excuse me, negative declaration, not mitigate, not mitigated for CEQA, for the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt recommendation for the board to adopt the 2019-2024 Housing Element Update with one recommended change, which has been implemented in the document, and that is for Program 4.2. The concern of the Planning Commission was that there was no mention of Class K housing in the document, specifically, as it's mentioned in building code, limited-density owner-built rural housing. And the Planning Commission felt that it was very important to touch on Class K housing, I'll use that term if I may, and that's, some language therefore has been added in Program 4.2. This was an existing program, and it was revised based on the Planning Commission's recommendation. So it now reads, bear with me here. Program 4.2 on page 81 now reads, "The county will continue to encourage voluntary code compliance by providing guidance and technical assistance to residents who wish to make their own repairs. Local education and home repair clinics will be supported in their efforts. Flyers for clinics and seminars will continue to be made available to the public. The county will explore the topic of limited-density owner-built rural housing/Class K housing." It's not much, but it's something, and it is aligned with what the Planning Commission recommended and proposed. The other item to mention is there was also some revisions to Program 10.1. That's on page 86. This revision was in response to a consultation, a tribal consultation with the Nororrelmuk tribe. There was a consultation with Sonny Hayward that we had on February 21st, 2020, and during that consultation, Mr. Hayward expressed the need to work, for the planning department to work more closer, work closely with the tribe, especially when it comes to onsite development and ground disturbance, and for tribal monitors to be on site for sensitive areas, cultural resource areas. One of the recommendations was to have a MOU in place with the planning department, similar to one that is currently in place with the Department of Transportation. And so we added that language into Program 10.1. Again, this was an existing program, added language to address that concern. So that program now reads, "Each time a housing project is proposed that may have an effect on a particular group or neighborhood, the county will make efforts to distribute information on the project to ensure that the group or neighborhood is made aware of the project and the process, and has the opportunity to respond. The county will explore options for improving communication with tribes and other stakeholders for all development projects involving ground disturbance. The county will consider whether a memorandum of understanding or another method would be appropriate for ensuring that tribal monitors are present when needed. The county will implement selected communication improvement approaches if feasible."
Kim, what page is that?
That is page 86.
Thank you.
Page 145 in your backup.
Thank you. Yes, 86 of the document attachment. Okay, and then, again, on page 87, circling around, lastly, to ARENA, you will see there is table. I'm not sure, I don't have this, what number, page number, this isn't the backup, but it's page 87, so it'll be the next page from what we just looked at. And this is a Quantified Objectives section, and we're looking at Table V-1, Quantified Objectives. So while I want to point out that where the ARENA, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation for Trinity County, is two units. There are also some other objectives that we're trying to meet, and those are the conservation and preservation of 319 very low residents, residential units, residences. And this comes back to the conditions of the units, the quality of the housing stock, and, and so that 319 reflects improvements that could be made for health and safety, you know, roofing, siding, electrical upgrades to, to make sure those houses are safe for residents of Trinity County, and that they're preserved, they're not going to start to unravel that downward spiral where they have not been maintained and eventually are not healthy, safe places for the residents to live. And I think that, that's, that's an issue in many places, especially in Trinity County. I believe that this is very important, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, there's eight units with low, in the low-income category, with rehabilitation. So rehabilitation, I guess, is more the roofing, the siding. The conservation and preservation is, is more intense process. We have units that are at risk of just not being livable, and that's where it's at.
Can you finish item 2.1 and then go along to item 2.2?
I'm not on 2.2. I'm on page 87 of the housing element.
Oh, and I think we were going to make sure you had gone and excited me up.
No, I'm still on housing element. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just threw a lot at you, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And I think what I'll do is just ask and go in alphabetic order from the supervisor. So Supervisor Brown, do you have any?
Yeah, I have a question. It's not about any of the information you shared, but the Right of First Refusal Program. Can you give me any more information on that, or how did that happen? I'm just curious. I noticed that there wasn't any program that was originating out of Trinity County. But what is that? Can you tell me about that program?
I apologize. I was distracted for a moment. Can I come back to you?
The Right of First Refusal Program?
Can I come back to you just a minute?
Yeah.
I see what happened. There was misunderstanding, and I've been going over the housing element, which is item 2.2. Yeah. So...
Bring it back to 2.1, close the public hearing on that one. Okay.
Yes. I apologize for that. I should have just...
Okay, so at this time, we're going to close item 2.2. There was a miscommunication, and we're going to go back to item 2.1, and I'm, for the record, just going to read it again, if that's okay. 2.1, Conduct a Public Hearing to Acknowledge Receipt of the 2019 Housing Element Progress Report.
Okay. I've actually switched gears here.
So with that, there's no public present, and if there's someone public on the conference call that would like to ask a question, hearing none, we move it back to the board. And Kim, would you like to say anything about item 2.1?
No, not unless there's any question.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Which item are we talking about now?
We are on item 2.1.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, now I get it. So sorry about that.
So you just snapped Jeremy in a motion to...
So you just snapped, you had a motion to.
You want a motion to accept it?
Yes, please.
Okay, Finley will make a motion to accept it as presented.
You know, hey.
I'll say.
Point of order, I guess. Margaret, help me out here, but we're not, we're just, we only said that there was a public hearing, we're not accepting the document.
That's right, we're going to close the public hearing.
Okay, that was a little confusing.
Just receiving the progress report.
We're going to close the public hearing and then move on to 2.2, because we need to give a vote on that. Chair, do you have a question?
Okay, so having been corrected by County Council, we will now close item 2.1. I appreciate the motion and the seconds. Moving on to item 2.2. Ms. Hunter, would you like to just jump in where you were and complete any thoughts that you might have had, not realizing that you were on 2.?
Yes.
Would you, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. My apologies for that, I was just moving forward with that Housing Element, Housing Element mode, and I apologize for that confusion there. Supervisor Brown, would you restate your question if you don't mind?
Yeah, I'm just curious what the program is, the right of first refusal.
And what page is that?
That is on page 106, 105, 106, it's just a list of all of these companies that I guess are, I don't know.
So your pages are in the whole packet, her page is separate, and it would be at the bottom in the middle normally.
So Appendix 2, after the county maps.
Okay.
It's just a list of all these businesses that are on this list for right of first refusal. Is that when property goes into foreclosure and they, they're interested in bidding on it, or? You don't have to answer right now, but I'm curious, because that's just a lot of businesses, and none of them are from Trinity County.
Right, right.
That's all, I'm just curious about that.
Yes, yes, I will get back to you on that, that is a fantastic question, I do not have the answer.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Finley, would you have?
Yes, did you say Finley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, low-income housing, the two units, can we use our current low housing, or are these in addition?
These are in addition, they'll be, the two units need to be constructed during the planning cycle, the five-year planning cycle. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Supervisor Rose?
I'm sorry, does that mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My first question is, can anybody describe to me what environmental justice is, because I've always found the environment to be very unjust.
That's a philosophical question in there.
So, I, I think, my first has a statement here that we've caught ourselves in, like Trinity County always has, and this is not anything against him in any way, this is what we've had this discussion, or I've had this discussion with him, that here again, we are caught in this situation where we have to pass this and move on, and not really bring value to the document except to get, or bring accuracy to the document. There's a lot of, a lot of things in here that can be improved on, but for time constraints, we just can't get to them. And so we have this tendency to have this document that nobody uses because it's not inaccurate, and then we just move on, and the next thing we know, it's caught, that we have to pass another one. Over like 20 years of volunteer, we've never, we've always done this exact same thing. But, so I'm going to highlight a couple of things that I think are really important for us to understand and maybe make donations, as I talked to Kim about. On page 30, when we talked about the farmworkers, this is already very outdated, we talked about farmworking, drop dropping, and so we know that we have 315, headed to 500 licenses, and now maybe 1,000 more employees as farmworkers. And so we don't reflect that anywhere in this document, which I think could really change how we use this document. On page 55, there's some timetable over what the planning can do, and I just think for the knowledge of the board anyway, and Kim can address this, those are in a perfect world timetable, that I'm saying that we're doing right now, but hopefully in the next couple of years she can get here. Page 62, I wanted to thank Kim for bringing up the CCA talk and that, I think that's, that's kind of the first time we've ever documented that we're trying to do that. On page 60, when it comes to power, we have this interesting have and have-nots in the county, and so I don't know how we portray that, but so we have cheap power where we have power. And so this is important in this document, because we have expensive power to expand that, it's expensive to bring lives to areas developing. So, you know, in the future, I think that's a discussion that could be looked at. And then last, we don't talk about the government constraints, or when we talk about the government constraints, we don't talk about the, the state government. So the state says we should provide affordable housing for people, yet they passed a bunch of rules and they house it unaffordable. And so in future documents, I think it's important that we somehow mention the huge benefit that we're getting, you know, we're getting exemption on solar panels on homes, and those are year-to-year deals, so it would be nice to have the county government notate in a document someplace that those are a value to our county to keep affordable housing. So with that, I mean, I found tons of different legal problems, but, you know, again, we have to pass this.
So.
I'm done.
Thank you. Supervisor Morris?
No, just a quick general question off some of the things Supervisor Groves had mentioned. Between the next, between now and the next time we update this, is there time to fine-tune some of these things in terms of, you know, I noticed the odd number of people with higher income and the lack of homeownership. And I know a lot of that is based on census, but, but again, this is the importance of doing our census, which is right now, which I'll put a plug in for. So I don't know if there's a way we can really dig deep into that to make sure that is correct without pulling anything up, and we don't have to do obviously anything tomorrow, but just wanted it on your radar.
On the radar for the, the next housing cycle?
Or is there in between now and then to just kind of fine-tune in preparation for the next housing cycle, I guess?
Yes, it would be in the.
And we'll have new numbers, obviously.
New numbers, and yes, absolutely, absolutely. Another comment that was brought up in the Planning Commission is, and, and this is based on 2017 data, but the cannabis industry in Trinity County also has a federal housing with, especially with the requirement for residents to be on, be associated with the cultivation operation. So we're seeing a lot of building permits, we had our record year with building permits last year. So that's newer data that we need to be sure in the next five years to address that connection and the impact of that industry on our economy and housing. So yeah, there's, there's a few things that definitely need to work on.
And is there, is there a midterm, if you will, for lack of a better term, to update some of those numbers before the next element is due? It's just a matter of.
Right, we could, we could definitely update them internally.
Yeah.
And then, and make sure they're ready to go when the five years comes up, because those five years go really quick.
And numbers really are going to change from now to two years to five years, in different directions. So that was my one concern about the amount of, and I've heard, you know, upper management, senior management, when they're trying to relocate here for employment, it's really tough to find housing. In addition of, of course, adequate housing for on the building from site as well, so just a bunch of sense.
Thank you. So I appreciate you bringing all this information. I have a couple of questions on the 319 very low that need upgrade and the eight low that need rehabilitation. Do you know what percentage that is of our overall housing stock for that demographic?
No, I do not.
So it might be the majority of the, because that's a lot of houses, 319, that are in that category that need to be upgraded, so that might be a large percent of, of those lower-income people. The other question, and I, I would more propose this to the board, and the recommendation that, the change with the Class K, I would like to get the board's input, I would like to concur with the Planning Commission, and since we don't really have a Class K, I would like to encourage that to come forward to the board. And so how does the board feel like that on the whole? Go ahead, Ms. Morris.
Say your question again, Bobby.
I would, I would like to, the Class K element, there's a recommendation that is now in, it's on the Program 4.2 on page 81. The Planning Commission is recommending that we have that element in our housing upgrade, but Trinity County, to my knowledge, doesn't have a Class K, so I would like to get feedback, and Supervisor Morris has already hit her light, so on how the board specifically feels about giving direction to staff to go forward with having a Class K. It doesn't make sense to me to have that element in our upgrade and then not follow-up on it.
So I have a question for Kim based on your statement, oh, sorry, 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 sorry. So Kim, with this type of development of a Class K policy, et cetera, would that come through our general plan update, or would it be an addendum to this, or how does that function?
So the Housing Element, Program 4.2 reads, "The county will explore the topic of limited density owner-built rural housing slash Class K housing." So this is that first baby step, setting that stage. It would need to be, my recommendation would be that it be further reviewed in the General Plan Element Update, and, and go from there. That would be my recommendation at this point, to, to address, to get the general plan updated and create the context for it as overall policy, but this, this definitely starts that process, at least exploring feasibility, and that's the language here on that topic. Somehow the board would just proceed, and of course, is at your discretion, but that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Finley or Groves on the phone?
Yes, thank you, this is Keith. So we banked around on this several times, and I requested that several times, if we're going to go down this road to bring all of the planning divisions and reprioritize them. Right now, Class K is in the, in the prioritized list, it's just now on, over on the list, behind the general plan. If we want to change that, then we need to not just direct them to do this, we have to say, what aren't you going to do to complete this? And so if we want to take a list of their next five years' priorities, that's fine, but let's do it as a whole and not try to use merely because that was just designed for them.
We're not hearing you, so I don't know if you're mute is on, or you have nothing to say, so I'm just going to go ahead and, Supervisor Brown?
Nothing to say.
Nothing to say, okay. So that wraps up all the, go ahead.
Do you have an unrelated question?
Do you want to, on item 2.2, or?
Just to the, the update in general.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, because we're going to make a motion, I do it before, so.
Yeah, right. So going back to the Planning Commission recommendations, like something just caught me, so in their recommendation, right below the Class K, actually, they mentioned lack of internet is a major barrier to development. So we know regionally, there's a project that's coming through, Digital 299, is that not referenced, and what were they referring to as dry utility?
Where?
That would be, that would be page 5, under Planning Commission meeting March 19th, which starts on page 4, and this is, follows up on page 5.
No, it's, it's, it's not touched, touched on as much as it should be. That's something we definitely want to put on the list to make sure we have that information for the next cycle. That's what's brought up in public comment, the need to address that as well. We can consider that in a broad sense of infrastructure, but at this point, it's, yeah, it's not mentioned specifically in the document.
Do we need to mention it somehow, since it's an ongoing project? And it's, I mean, this kind of raises though not, not a project has started. So I'm not sure what's the best approach.
I would have to research, do more work and research where that would be appropriate, and, and touch base with a consultant.
Okay.
And so this is, it's like very, very important for our community, and, and we're definitely realizing that right now with our crisis situation, the importance of internet and broadband capabilities, and so, yeah. That definitely should, I thought that was an excellent comment received of the Planning Commission, but that was not part of their motion or any, any recommendation that the Planning Commission made.
This just came up from public comment, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so I just didn't want us to get into some weird bind because it's not mentioned, but you're just reporting on what public comment is?
Yes, yeah, that's part of that public commenting and, and public review of the document component that.
Because I, I noticed they have the Class K housing right above it, so that came out of public comment as well, then?
That did come up in public comment, but that was discussed by the Planning Commission, included in the motion, the broadband and internet infrastructure and, and needs was not discussed by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so I guess I'm confused as where does that leave us, not in that weird corner, because I'm not mentioning it?
No.
That didn't.
My recommendation would be to make sure it's addressed in, in future documents, you know, that there is a project in process, and, and address that in the future Housing Element in five years, but this is the Housing Element, so it, it could fall under infrastructure. I just don't know that there's a specific project and that status of that project.
Okay, and. And I see the difference in terms of the commission and the public comment. It wasn't that clear. But now that you pointed out, I see what you're saying. Okay. Okay?
Kind of relative to that. Because PUD did have a two-year contract with the data center that I believe was going to be utilizing the potential and maybe Supervisor Morris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the data center had the intention of using the potential broadband project to really seal the deal. They already had the power. They just needed the bandwidth. And I'd echo that. I don't know how relative it is to the housing element, but especially downriver, our limited bandwidth. A lot of people are trying to do more work from home now, go back to school, online, stuff like that. So I don't know if that would be a relative aspect of the housing element, people's ability to obtain a college degree from their resident. That makes a location more valuable or things like that. But I would be supportive of any reference to the broadband need.
I think this goes back to Supervisor Groves saying that there's a diverse need for prioritizing the different things. And the fact that it's mentioned that we don't have it, I think, is a good thing, even though there's a project waiting because it stated that lack of. And so I think that covers it in that potential way. So hopefully, we will have, by the next time, the project will be completed and it'll be...
That's right.
Yeah. So we have no public here to comment. And I think there was one person on the phone, if they have a comment. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Supervisor Finley.
Resolution. We'll do a little call.
Hearing none. Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Chavis?
Aye.
And so before we adjourn, I would ask Ms. Christie, if you could come up. I don't know if you want to sit up by a microphone and over by the speaker. And we're going to have a brief update from our environmental department head. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Chair and Supervisors. First, with your comment, I would like to ask if Marcy Kuzel, Public Health Emergency Director, or Liz Hamilton, Health and Union Services Interim Director, would like to comment on COVID-19?
Thank you. Marcy, are you there?
Hi, I'm Liz Hamilton, a good desk in Office of Emergency Services Interim Director. She's here. And Marcy Kuzel, our Public Health Emergency Director, was present. So good morning to Medicare members and boards. A brief update from myself, and then I'll pass to Marcy. Is, as you know, the Office of Emergency Services, we are activated. We have office staff, of course, and the manager at Presley. There's almost mine as well. We have a PIO and then Planning and Logistics. And our goals right now at this time are really driven by the objectives of a lot of our partners and offering that support to them as COVID-19 evolves and as day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis. And so I know this is the real meat and potatoes that the update is going to come from Marcy. So I'll pass to her. And then Christie can give an update on some of the nuances in environmental health. And then if Ed has anything to add, he can do so after Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Marcy Kuzel, Public Health Emergency Director. Thank you, Board members, for the opportunity to update you. As of right now, we have 44 COVID tests that have been conducted on three county residents with 42 negative and two pending. Our Public Health DOC is moving into objectives around surge planning and PPE. Those are the fundamental overarching objectives that we have for this operational period and moving into the next operational period, which is a week-long OP. So the other information that you need to know is that we are looking at protocols to establish a protocol for essential workers and what the PPE needs for them are based on the variety of scenarios that they face and scrutinizing that and ensuring that our essential workers are protected with the appropriate PPE, while at the same time ensuring that we can serve those resources in a manner consistent with our surge planning. We are working with hospitals and other healthcare providers. We're looking, we're moving into advanced surge planning, which essentially means that we are asking our hospital partner to begin to look at their surge plan. I'm sure they have. I don't mean that to sound like they haven't. But really, both of us partnering, the health department and the hospital, was really diving deeper into what surge will mean for Trinity County, what the triggers are for the health department. The trigger essentially would be a positive case. And I'm sure that our hospital agrees with that. However, surge in other areas meant for requiring a positive case. So we're looking at staffing in the health department, staffing for essential workers, and that sort of planning. We're consistently in communication with bordering counties and monitoring those COVID cases. I'm sure the public and the board knows that on every side of us, we are surrounded by counties that have COVID positive cases. So we are operating now under the assumption that we may very well have cases which we intend, we don't know it. And so we want to step up our efforts and really communicate to the public how vital it is that they comply with the governor's order for the state, the president's order for the country, and our health officer's order for the county. That is social distancing, quarantine for those people that aren't ill yet, that are coming in. We don't know the exposure. Quarantine is around, we don't know when the exposure is coming in. So right now, that window of inactivity, we know this is May. You don't manifest within 14 days with being exposed. So that quarantine, each of 14 days. Also isolation for individuals that are ill. Isolation is a much more stricter restriction in that we very much limit people's ability to move without the public. They must remain six to 10 feet away from others all the time. They may need to separate bathrooms, separate bedrooms, or in the home. And without going into a lot of detail, we'll be providing more of this information at a press conference on Friday to ensure the public is brought along with these drugs. That's really all I have. I just want to make a final reiteration of how important it is and how thankful we are to the public and the board and our CAO and department heads with everything they're doing. It is absolutely essential that we continue these strategies while simultaneously stepping up our response and ensuring that we can provide our population what they need and prevent serious illness and death. And that's what we are tasked with doing, and that's what we will do. Thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have questions?
I have got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Go ahead.
I don't want an answer right now, but I'd like you to consider with CAO and doctor, and the doctor, letting the county employees, including electeds, know what their responsibility is as we move forward with this emergency. I know that I can be called upon to participate. However, you directly, Doctor directs me, Chair directs me. So just make sure that we know what our responsibilities are.
Thank you, Supervisor Finley, absolutely. And we appreciate that. And most definitely, we are working through the CAO and keeping him updated as we are updating the board. Please, yes, and we're happy to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Morris?
I have two questions unrelated. The first one is, we certainly saw that order last week come up from the doctor regarding second homes. And that was in hopes of reducing our exposure. So my other question, and CAO Kuzel, I know I mentioned this briefly to you in passing last week when I saw those numbers in Humboldt increasing. What is our thoughts on reducing, changing our transit system? I'm concerned about the coast to Shasta route. I look at other transit systems. Some are closing. Some are going to demand response just to serve their immediate citizens. So I'm worried about, of course, our drivers, the public passengers. And everyone's working so hard to maintain this, you know, zero case level, which I hope we can keep going. I would hate to have exposure through this.
Yeah, that's been one of the concerns. We've just, we've been discussing, especially with the rise of cases now in Humboldt County, I think of top 27. Director Tippett has been working closely with Christie and the doc discussing this precautions, giving authority to the drivers to not let someone on the bus if they feel that they have some type of symptoms. And we are discussing not going any farther west than we've talked about, maybe not going into Willow Creek and stopping it just before we get to the border. So it's used primarily for people who are going from coast to high five. So that's one of the big concerns we have. So we'll be reporting that back to the board, hopefully shortly, because we have an electricity talking this. But it's been kind of the top of conversation the last probably 24 hours with the doctor.
Okay. And my other sense is, you know, on a cost-effective measure, perhaps there's empty buses traveling because most people are trying to stay home. So there's that aspect to it. And to me, it just seems like there's some adjustment that needs to be made with trying to keep our exposure down.
Yeah, it's definitely on our radar.
Okay. So my other unrelated question to transit is, you know, in, as I mentioned last meeting, we look at, I look at anyways, this pandemic as a forest fire. It's a different approach, different circumstances. In recovery, we would be looking at people who've lost their homes. How do we get their homes back up? How do they get building moving? In this scenario, I look at our businesses, our small businesses. The CARE Act came out last Friday, was passed, I believe. And so I appreciate the efforts from Washington. I've seen this before. It will hit the ground the money that's eligible for small businesses, in some cases too late, as employers are trying to keep their employees paid, keep the bills paid. So I wanted to know if, I've seen other OESs starting to look at economic impact surveys and kind of do a poll, if you will, of the local businesses and what impacts they're feeling besides what we're able to see. Obviously, there is impact since most businesses are closed. And the second also, if we could get next week, is what in our CDBG funding that maybe we could offer in a stopgap measure to help until those folks feel that they're kind of back stable or a loan comes through? Obviously, some of those new loans are also short gap kind of measures, but they will hit the ground. It will take a while for that to hit the ground. And I'm afraid in some circumstances, businesses in our county, we won't have that length of time to keep the doors open for them. So if we could get an update or options next week of those topics, that would be great. What we could maybe roll out very locally in small amounts if there is that income that we have been receiving through CDBG.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Hopefully, I get it to you by the 7th. Because the 21st, we're hoping we're on the downhill slide. And that's when we want the businesses back, open up again. The Governor did have an executive order today, 9420, which is for local businesses and small businesses. And then again, I'll look at our CDBG and our revolving loan accounts, which pertain to economic development, to see if there's something we can do with those funds, too. That would be something we can bring back to the board if we can to change some of our loan accounts. Right now, most of them are in housing, but there used to be. And I'm going from memory, but I will look. There used to be the availability of economic development. What we could do, 51% have to be loans, and the other 49% can be in grants. So we can do with those.
I appreciate it. Thank you. There was also an infusion in the SBA. I think you're on that link. If not, I'll send that to you, but through Bob Nash and Laurie Berisik.
Yeah, we just posted on our front page yesterday, the SBA Stopgap Net has $25,000 immediate stopgap loans. Some of them are forgivable. So there's a lot of things coming out from both the state and the feds. But we'd like to speak to you here at the local level.
And, you know, going by experience in the '08, those fires, there was some disaster recovery money for businesses. Took forever to get on the ground. I think most people gave up. So I think what I quickly read on the CARE Act, they're trying to not repeat that performance again and try to get money to the ground. But still, it is bureaucracy. It will take a long time to hit to the ground of small businesses in our communities. And maybe SCED will have a separate office here to help some of our businesses. I don't know.
Thank you, Marcy. Was that going to report out or not?
I believe that they wanted me to report out first.
Okay, thank you.
Christie Anderson, Director of Trinity County Environmental Home. So Supervisor Morris brought up a good point. And we've been working with businesses really closely at Environmental Home, really trying to push compliance with avoiding gathering altogether. And we've had great success with compliance locally. And I've been very impressed by local businesses that have gone extra mile to meet some of these demands, such as providing delivery for seniors and they have never provided delivery before. You know, offering jobs to people that are out of jobs, keeping their employees working because they feel it's necessary for their employees to make it. And we do see local businesses struggling a lot. Recently, I had a business that has never, ever been late for payment or anything, and they were unable to pay this year. And it makes it really, really tough on small businesses. And I do acknowledge that. We have tried to, with the health order, we tried to focus on broadening language to make it easier for enforcement, if that ever does need to be done. And we are hopeful that that will not have to be done. But we're really working on trying to get that language perspective so that we can, you know, have the ability to work with our businesses when they get desperate and don't want to follow the rules anymore. Is there any questions?
Is there any opportunity or avenue for us to allow businesses that are unable to make their payments to extend them or give an extension or anything like that?
I think we'll have to discuss that, the CEO and myself, and bring that back.
What's your payments?
These are specifically for food facility.
Oh, gotcha.
Food handling permits?
Yeah, I catch that.
Yeah, I didn't want to get too narrow on what business it was. But, you know, just you have your businesses that are always compliant. So it was very upsetting to see that they could not. Anything else?
Are there anybody else weighing in on this conversation? Liz, did you say Ed was going to speak or not? I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
I'm not sure if Ed had anything to report. I'll defer to him on that.
Okay.
And if not, that would be the update from all of us today.
So that would conclude the update on COVID-19. Sorry? So we just want to encourage you to stay safe and strong and healthy. And appreciate the teamwork that you're all doing. And can't thank you enough. So please be safe. And with that...
And wash your hands.
And wash your hands, and wash your hands. And wash your hands, and wash your hands. We can adjourn?
Don't touch your face.
Yes, that's the hardest one.
It is.
I do it outside. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us on the phone.
So we're working it out. So I'm here.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's, that's, I have to move myself, I have to just disinfect.